Call the. Call the meeting to order. And hopefully Carol will join us soon, but we have a. Have a quorum without it. I'm going to start with the rules for public participation. All attendees will be muted during business portions of the meeting. Muting restrictions will be lifted during the public comment portions of the meeting. Each public participant may address the board for three minutes during the public comment periods. Those commenting must state their name and address. Any participants who engage in Zoom bombing or other disruptive trolling behaviors will be removed from the meeting. Next, so FYI, we haven't had any problems yet, but we're on it. So we're going to start with introductions. We'll do board member introductions and board members also need to state the city and state in which they are physically located. So I will start. I am Anne Donahue, President of the Board of Trustees and I am in Marquette, Michigan. And I will go, well Carol's not here, so we'll go to Patrick.
Yes, Patrick Myron, Board of Trustees and I am currently in Marquette, Michigan.
Steve?
Steve Schmuck, Board of Trustees, currently in Marquette, Michigan.
Thank you. And I know we have several library staff with us as well, so. Next up is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? I don't have any.
Nope, this is Patrick. I see none unless.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Steve. Motion. Oh, sorry Patrick.
No, go right ahead.
Steve, I'll make the motion. We approved the agenda.
I second this, Carol. Hi Carol. Hi, sorry, I had trouble getting in.
That's okay. Carol has joined us at 5:06. So yay. Oh Carol, can you please introduce yourself and state the city and state in which you are physically located?
Carol Steinhaus on the board, Marquette, Michigan.
Thank you. We were just in the process of approving the agenda, so Steve made a motion, Carol seconded it. If I, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve, how do you vote?
Aye.
This is Anne, I also vote aye, and that motion passes 4-0. Next up is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any changes or edits or additions to the minutes from the May 18th meeting? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18th meeting?
This is Patrick, so moved.
Steve, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Carol, how do you vote?
Aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve, how do you vote?
Aye.
This is Anne, I also vote aye. So that passed 4-0 to approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2021 meeting. And that brings us to our special presentation from Amy Selmanin, the Circulation Department Head. Hi Amy.
Hey Amy. There I am, okay.
There you are.
Okay. Um, I feel like I was just here and I was in November, so it wasn't too long ago that I spoke to the board about the circulation department and you know, the biggest thing that we do is checking in and checking out, registering people for library cards and accepting fines and fees. Those are the big things we do and um, I will report that quarantine is over. Yay. So um, we have finished the backlog of quarantine and um, everything is now getting checked in and in a very timely manner, so it gets off their record as soon as possible. A lot of people are still just using the book drops, which is just fine. They get picked up every two hours now. And we check those items in every, every time they come in, um, in real time. So that's, that's really good news of us moving forward past the pandemic and um, and really helps people um, know what's on their record. You know, we don't have that lag as far as um, not checking items in, so that's really good. The other thing we do a lot of is library card registration. We have an online um, form that is now being used to like pre-register for a card. And people can input their data and then bring in all of their um, information, their driver's license with current ID or and/or um, proof of address. Um, well not or, but and proof of address. Um, so that makes the process go by much faster if we do have an online registration. Um, already in the system, so. Um, how often are book drops emptied? The township book drops are emptied once a week on Wednesdays. Um, Tom, so um, it's, it's done by um, mostly the circulation staff. And on occasion, I know that Rick has been doing it for a while, but that has been taken over by circulation staff members now. So. Um, if you have any questions, you can throw them in the chat. I have the chat up, so I'll try and answer them as they come through. Um. I guess I just want to highlight some other services that the circulation department does that you may not know about or may not realize that we do. Um, we are the faxing service for the library. We go ahead and fax items for people for a dollar page and um, take those payments and get the faxes through. Um. We take credit card payments for the different services in the library. The credit card machine is at circulation, so. Um, passport fees, um, printing fees, faxing fees, Friends of the Library book sale. Um, we take all of that um, credit card transactions information at the circ desk. Um. We also do some very limited placing of holds by phone and in person. Um, you know, if someone has a lot of holds to put on that aren't just coming up in our system very easily, we do send them upstairs to reference for Melcat help and um, for placing numbers of holds. But if someone just has one book they need to put on hold, we'll gladly do that for them. Um. Materials management, so this is like the biggest thing with check-in and checkout. And we also assess the, the where of the items. So we make sure that anything that needs to go to mending goes to mending. We make sure that the library of things, items are all together and put away properly and checked in. Um. We're still doing curbside service. There are some families who are still needing that service, so we are providing it to them. Um, they do need to register online um, at least 18 hours before they're coming for their scheduled pickup. But we still are offering curbside service and some people are taking us up on that offer. Um, we accept materials donations for the Friends of the Library. Um, all those donations come to the circ desk and we put them in the lines room right now for them to pick up and um, deal with as they will. And um, we help in processing holds. So we do that twice a day, actually. A lot of people don't know that, but we have a poll list that's run every day. And we have one of the pages, go ahead and pull all those holds. And then Dawn does the initial processing of them and then she brings them upstairs and we um, get them on the hold shelf, so they're ready to go for patrons. And then in the middle of the day, after Dawn gets the delivery and unpacked, she brings those up and we process those holds to be ready for patrons as well. So there's a lot of stuff that happens in circulation that people don't realize. Um, and you know, we've also done some special projects like removing dollar signs from the DVDs and um, folding envelopes or folding um, letters to go in envelopes. We've done stuff like that. Um. And um, we've done the trainings that Andrea has put out on um, YouTube and um, you know, make sure, I make sure my staff um, watches all of those because those are really important for them, especially the privacy training was really important for them to know. Because a lot of times we're the first people that um, that are seen in the library. And so they come to us with a lot of questions that we may or may not be able to answer, so we need to know what to do in those situations.
Yeah, I don't think people realize how uh, unique Michigan's library privacy laws are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are. They are very unique. And um, some other things that I do as a department head, I kind of deal with the weird stuff that happens that's out of the ordinary. And I think Bruce would know a lot about that. Because sometimes I have to go to him with the questions. Um. But I think I get probably the odd things that happen within the system and try and troubleshoot them. Um, you see my board reports every month, so I gather statistics and um, and make them usable. Um, and I'm also involved with um, Superior Land in the ALS Committee and in um, the UPRLC Conference Committees. So um, I'm staying busy and I'm also doing a lot of um, patron database management right now. And um, cleaning up records and um, making sure that everything is um, done the same within the system as far as um, you know, getting rid of patrons who haven't been using the library and yet registering new patrons and making sure that they're in the system properly. So um, you know, it's, we cleaned up about 862 records last month. So um, it was a lot of work, but well worth it in the end. Um. And we're looking forward to um, to more um, database management um, in the future, you know, to do it regularly and not have it fall off the wayside, because it's really important to keep our data as um, clean as possible.
Yeah, and if you do it along the way, it just keeps, makes it easier.
Yeah, yeah. So um, those are some things that we do. I have a staff of seven circulation staff members and four pages. So um, our fourth page will be starting next month. Um. And I'm looking forward to being fully staffed, so that would be full staff for me. Um. And it makes life a lot easier when we are fully staffed, so I'm not totally going crazy with scheduling. That's about all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Hmm. Well, you said, did you say ALS committee that you're involved in?
Yeah, the Automated Library Service.
Oh, okay, so it's the catalog?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ILS basically.
Yeah. Okay, and they're in the process of picking a new one, right?
Possibly, yeah, I just, they're reinstating that um, committee and I've asked to be put on it, so.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, we need input on that, I feel like.
Definitely, um, you know, I've worked on a, on one other system in my tenure as a librarian. I've been on Cersei most of my life, but um, I've also worked on Polaris, so. That's another ILS that um, was bought out by Innovative.
Oh, really? When did that happen?
Oh, years ago.
Okay.
They're an innovative product now.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yep, with Millennium and some other things that they have, so.
Okay. I'm a little out of touch, but that's okay.
That's okay.
Great, well, I mean, you dare, you all do wonderful work. I mean, I think, you know, one of the things.
Great.
Yeah, one of the things I love about our libraries, when I walk in, I feel welcome. And I know that that, as a first, you know, face we see, I know that has a lot to do with the circulation department, so thank you for all your hard work and your staff.
Absolutely, yeah, no, so. Any idea how long Amy you think you might continue curbside?
Um, I have not talked to Andrea about that, but that would be a joint decision, I think.
Sure.
It has tapered off immensely.
I bet, yeah.
Couple of families that are still um, using the service and um, pretty regularly. Um. So we are continuing to provide that.
Sure, absolutely, great. Yeah, well, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Amy? Hearing none, I will say thank you again.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming and we are always happy to hear from, from all of you, so.
Right, yeah, we appreciate all your time and work, for sure. As, yeah.
And so does the City Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the community.
Yes, the greater, yes, the rings just sort of spread from there, but.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
All right, moving on to public comment. So this is, we are, this is a time when, you know, we open it up for public comment, if anybody has any questions for us or well, comments, actually. Hearing none, I'm going to move on. There is another option, another public comment period coming up later, so if anybody thinks of anything, they're welcome to do so at that time. Next up, we have Jan Raskin from the Township Advisory Council. She represents Chocolait Township. Hi Jan, it's nice to see you.
Hi, everybody, it's good to be here. I don't really have a report at this time, but I do have a little bit of uh, news. Everybody's been wondering what uh, is happening across the street from Nagelkirk's. I don't know if you've noticed, all the road, all the trees that are being cut down. And nobody seems to know, but I happened to run into somebody who was on the planning commission last week and asked her. And they are developing six one-acre lots for commercial use. And that's all she was able to tell me, but I thought that was interesting. So I thought, thought I'd share it with you. That's it.
That is interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that going by last weekend and I thought, boy, there's, there seems to be a couple vacant commercial locations right next to it, but maybe, you know, they're planning for the future, so.
Yeah, I don't know, and that road is going to go behind McDonald's.
Okay.
They're putting in a road. And I just kind of assumed it would go the other way, but it's going to go behind McDonald's, which I thought was interesting, too.
Alright.
That's great. Your summer's going along well so far?
Very well. My children are coming home in July. I haven't seen them in a year and a half.
Sure, okay.
So I'm looking forward to that, thank you.
Yeah, I bet you'll recognize them, so don't worry.
Oh, I'm sure. Maybe not, maybe not the grandchildren.
Oh, well, no, I'm sure you've seen, but yeah, all right. Well, thank you, yeah, we appreciate your time and thanks for the scoop.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have questions or comments for Jan? Okay, hearing none, I'll add my thanks for your attendance and, and your representation to the township. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, Rick?
Hey.
Is this your, this is your last board meeting?
No, it's not, no, it's not. Actually, it is and.
Oh, no.
I'll change up here for my last one a little bit on how I normally.
Now, now's not the time to get clever.
It definitely is a bittersweet moment because it will be the last time that I'll report to the board.
Will you?
I'm not sure I would have done it in July anyways, but, but you don't have a meeting in July, so, so it definitely is the last one. And I just want to share with the board how much of a pleasure this has been working over eight years for the library. I've shared it with Andrea that it's, it's been one of my true joys in my life is this close out of my working career. So uh, I just want to uh, share that and just that this board has been wonderful to work with. The trust and um, willingness to share my guidance and, and has been greatly appreciated, so. So I wanted to share those words with the board. Uh, I don't have uh, my typical person that's going to give me some questions here. So, but I will still see if there's any specific areas of my report that the, any of the board members would like me to address.
Rick, I had one, this is Steve.
Okay, you're, you're filling in for Andrew here. Good, good. I like this.
Right. Did I, did I read that right? I forget exactly what it was, but instead of needing to transfer 58.5 from the fund balance, we may be adding 28,000 to it?
Right, yes, that's, so I did some prelim, preliminary estimating as I, as Andrea and I work on next year's budget, but part of the process with the city is actually doing uh, close analysis of how the remainder of this fiscal year will, will work out. So, but just on some preliminary numbers, I'm pretty confident that we will not have to use the 58,000 now. And I have to always put the little asterisk on there, that's based on not having any really, really large tax tribunals. And the ones, you have some, some uh, major stores that have them out still in Marquette Township. And then we still don't have a clear idea what's, what's going on with the old hospital locations, so. So there is still some, some possibilities, but uh, as long as those two things don't happen, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that we won't have to use fund balance. And as I say, the prelim, preliminary, preliminary numbers are showing that we have a good likelihood of actually slightly growing our fund balance, or like last year, you weren't, weren't present for this, Steve. But what we did is rather than significantly increase our fund balance last year, we chose to use it to pay down our liability on our um, on our MERS side of things, so. So that might be a possibility again this year, so. But a good question, I guess the, the other thing that in my notes, I, I try and do a good job, but it does get kind of convoluted, is the township revenue situation, so. So I put in the township report that I keep, and this is kind of how I keep tabs on where we're at on township revenue coming into the library. And so at the beginning of June, you'll see um, some minor payments that came in. But then the major um, additional payment came in from Marquette Township. And so what that has done is our actual now is slightly over what we budgeted. But the good news is um, there's, there I think with some issues with the, the transfer process and settlement process. So when the property taxes for real property haven't been collected, at a point, they become delinquent and then they actually are turned over to the county. And the county pays the townships and the city of Marquette uh, for those delinquent taxes. And that process has not taken place, so I know for the city of Marquette, because it reflects it on our balance sheet, it's 18,000 that we still expected the see on our, our, it would be on our, in our cash position from the city, not on the revenue side. For the township, I'm estimating it's about 30,000 that between all the townships that we'll still see in delinquent. And that actually is not only revenue, that would also be reflected in, in uh, increase in our cash position by that amount. So that's, that's kind of one thing I just wanted to hopefully make everyone understand. I put it in my notes, but it gets, as I say, a little confusing as I try and describe that process, so, so that's, that's one thing. Um, the other thing that, that I um, I have the, the Board of Light and Power bills in there like I typically do in my board packet. Now, the one thing you'll notice is you'll see that now this, this year versus last year, we're quite a little bit higher. But I, what that period of time actually reflects is its usage from eight, mid-April to mid-May. It's called a May bill.
Right.
So it was actually, last year, we were in the throes of complete shutdown at that point. So the building was pretty much unoperational at that point. There was a few of us in here turning on a few lights, but basically the HVAC system was pretty much shut down. So that's, that's why that usage number is very artificially low, just because of the scenario last year, so.
Right.
So if you compare, it's, it, it didn't really go up a lot from the prior month, this is about the same, so. So it, it's in line um, with what I'm forecasting, and so I still, still feel very comfortable that we'll, we'll end up this year at very close to our budgeted number. And, and so even if we continue these, the, the trends of uh, having to run our air conditioning pretty substantially, I think we'll be fine on that, meeting that budget number, so. So I think those were kind of my major points, if there's uh, any, anything else that the, the board would like me to address, I'd be, be happy to try and answer those questions.
I don't have any questions.
No, no, I don't. I just have eternal gratitude, but I'll save that for the end, so.
Okay.
Rick, to Steve again, two things. Um, one, good, a good job to everyone and yourself and Andrea and everyone who, who managed to get that, to make us maybe cash positive this year, adding to the fund balance. That's, that's a major accomplishment with everything going on. That's a feat. And the other thing was on the tax tribunal, uh, I know it's a complex issue, but could, could money be clawed back later? I mean, you know, years, we, I know there's been paybacks. It probably shows up in the current year budget then, even though it might be paybacks for three years ago. Is that, is that accurate? I mean, if, if things are being litigated now and settled out, you know, two years from now, it might be money that we owe back for 2021, but it'll, might be paid out in 2023. Is that in his current year?
That is correct, and so it's actually all reflected in the, the year of the transaction, yes. So you don't, you don't go back and, and adjust previous uh, income statements and, and revenue and expense reports, so yes. So you are right, um, we've had, and it was more in the beginning where this whole process started, I think the first one was literally three years. Yeah, so it was a big number, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't remember exactly which township property that was out in Marquette Township, but.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, reflected three years of activity, so. So it was big numbers and, and again, they can, they can linger on for a number of years, so. So they can start out as one year, but they end up as two years because the, the company or establishment that's doing it, the one thing they have to do is they have to stay current on their taxes. So they have to pay their bills, even if they have a tax tribunal, so. So it can very easily, if it rolls into us another year, be, they'll add this current year on to that tax tribunal process, so. So you're right, Steve, it could be multiple years that are, that are on there, so.
Thanks, Rick, thank you.
So I, I guess the, the other thing is what we're definitely not only in activity here at the library and, and patrons coming in, we're also seeing our, not, not that our operational revenue is a huge piece of it, but it definitely is, is trending up versus at this time last year was like, it was all zeros. Yeah, so the building was literally closed, there was nothing happening, yeah, so. So yeah, I did some comparison, oh yeah, so yeah, here's a zero in this category, zero in that category. As I say, it's not a great deal of revenue or, or cash that comes in, but it, it's still nice to see it trending back in, in a little up, upward momentum, so.
Positive gains, yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
So and they, the other one that, that also this, now the penal fines have bounced back a little bit, too, so. So that's the, the other, this, the number that's on this report is actually two months of payments that happened to fall in May. Um, so that's why that number is big, but it's still, we were averaging like 5,000, now it's like 6,500 or something like that is, is, and the penal fine average, so it is starting to trend up a little bit. So I think we'll hit that number, we might even, our budgeted number, and we might even still be a little, little bit over that potential, too, if, if the trend continues, so. Yeah, so here, here's the two. Yeah, so here, here's the two, so yeah, almost eight thousand and, uh, yeah, six thousand, six sixty-nine, basically, so. So that, those both came in, and, in May.
Very good. Other questions or comments about this month's financial reports? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the bills?
Oh, this is Patrick, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Steve, one second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote to approve the bills. Carol?
Think she might be on mute.
Carol, can you un, unmute yourself and vote on whether or not to approve the financial reports?
There it is, okay. Yes, I vote aye, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Patrick, how do you vote?
Uh, aye.
Steve, how do you vote?
Aye.
This is Ann, I also vote aye, so that passes four-zero. And Rick, I want to add my eternal thanks to Patrick's eternal thanks, I mean, you've done, I know it's a team effort, but you've been instrumental in making an enormous difference in the library's financial stability, and you will be greatly missed, and
Well, thank you, Ann and Patrick, yeah.
Yep, so.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, I've, I've been almost seven years, and it's financially, it's a completely different place than when, when I attended my first meeting. And I, as far as I knew, it was stable then, but then it became really clear that there were a few holes in the chinking, and those happened to be, uh, about to become problems, so, right, so tribunals, we had, oh my gosh, you know, you name it.
Patrick, you probably walked in the door about the time the tax tribunals started just popping, right?
That's purely coincidence, but yes, yes. It was. Again, I was reassured that this was great, there's no, ah, it's great board. Not political, don't worry, come here, let me know.
Where we, okay, there's no, no real options, but reducing
Waited till the second meeting, and then he said, well, we're, not only are we kind of broke, but people a bunch of money that we've already spent, so. Yeah, and, and that, not the library in particular, but it just was like, that was what was happening, so. But yeah, just, uh, a, a, anyway, yeah, you've been fundamental in keeping us solvent, uh, making us incredibly more efficient. And, you know, you've done, right, a whole millage and upgrade and renovation, and oh my gosh, um, everything, yeah, from electrical to writing the checks, so thank you, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those kind words.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, we have, uh, policies to approve that were presented at the May meeting. Do you have any questions or comments? About the credit card policy?
Andrea, am, am I still unmuted? I, this, I'm having trouble with my phone stuff here. Um, is it possible to consider these as a package? It seems to me we did that before.
Yes.
Yeah, I think since there's, we, we've discussed and presented, I, yeah, I think that's street legal, I think. Brett will tell you if it's not.
Yeah, I think it is fine, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's happy and
Sure, sure.
There in any questions or comments?
Yeah, there, there's one thing that I caught as I was reviewing it a little more carefully, a, and this is on the fund balance policy. There's like a, a typo that slipped through, so if you get to, let's see. I think you still got to keep going, Andrea, um. So this one right here, uh, in order of the five classifications, what we did is we removed one of those classifications, so it needs to be four classifications from A to D.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Hey, see, you can't go anywhere, Rick. You know, all the vowels, come on.
And don't ask me to, to review spelling, but, yeah, so.
Okay, with that correction, are there any other comments or questions?
Uh, this is Steve, I was just looking at what we talked about last time, um, Andrew and credit card policy, Andrew had asked about a provision for restitution, did that, did that, we determine that wasn't necessary?
Right, because that would be part of any litigation that took place.
Okay.
The collections part, yeah.
Sounds good. And then did the new, sorry, did the new fund balance policy, again, this is from the discussion last time, more detailed definition of what the balance can be spent on, is that what we've got then in the new policy, or we decided that wasn't needed either?
It was there, um, it's at the very end. Um, so in this, this, uh, last number seven, it has a list at the very end of the, the line here, one-time expenditures that are non-recurring in nature and do not require additional future expensive expense outlays for maintenance, additional staffing or other recurring expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the policies presented at the May meeting as amended?
This is Patrick, so moved.
Okay.
Okay, Carol, you have a nice Yeah.
A second, third, and fourth, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Carol, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Patrick?
Ayes.
Steve?
Aye.
This is Ann, I also vote aye, and that passes four-zero. Now, next up, we have a policy revision for the June meeting, it's the reopening plan of Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
So at the last, um, several director meetings that I've been at with the Library of Michigan, they've emphasized the need to make sure that the reopening plan has been updated with current practice. Um, and with, with the change of the MDHHS order and the CDC guidelines, um, I do think it's important to make these couple of little changes, it's not significant. Um, and I don't know that it really needs two readings, um, because by the August meeting, that, we may not even need this.
Right.
This policy at all anymore, so it's almost kind of like, um, making a, a policy revision to potentially not even need the policy, but it is important to keep this up to date, so, um, I did change some wording regarding the masks and regarding meeting rooms, meeting room usage, um, because we didn't have meeting room usage permitted in stage five. It was stage six for that, for public meeting room use. Um, and then the hours of operation were also off, it had seven, and I, so I put in six, which is our current schedule. So those are the changes that were made.
Are there any questions or comments?
No, I, 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 I guess I hope it will be obsolete come our August meeting, that would be, that would be a good thing, so.
Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, may I have a motion?
This is Yes, this is Patrick, um, the Board of Trustees of the Peter White Public Library moves to approve the GOV-dash-nine reopening plan, Exhibit A as presented. This policy will become effective on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second, this is Steve.
Yeah, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Carol, how do you vote?
Oh, we might have lost Carol, I don't see.
We might have lost her again.
Oh no, we don't want to, okay. Patrick, how do you vote?
Uh, I vote aye.
Okay, Steve, how do you vote?
Aye.
This is Ann, I also vote aye. So it does pass three-zero with a quorum. So we, Carol's gone, huh? Okay, so if we can just make a note of the minutes that Carol had to step out, I guess, or got disconnected, not sure. I think that, I think we'll be okay with that. Even if, because even if she voted no, it would still pass, so, okay. Which I didn't, I don't anticipate.
No.
Uh, then, next up, we have a policy revision for operating hours.
So this is something I think we want to talk about approving at the August meeting, um, we don't need to make an official approval today, but I did want to have some discussion about it because staff need time to plan. And if we wait until August to, um, you know, officially, officially decide without staff having any kind of guidance on which direction that we're headed, it's just real hard to plan schedules. Um, so I know that leaves a kind, us in kind of a nebulous position, but I did want to go through some of the discussion points about the, the schedule, um, so that we have some, some things to think about, and, um, so anyway, we did do the survey earlier this year and asked some questions about operating hours in that survey. I did put in the weighted responses, um, as you may or may not remember, uh, I did wait the responses so that there was emphasis placed on those items that people ranked more highly than others, um, which is why they're called weighted, um, and Saturday morning and, um, was the top request, so if you'll remember the way that the survey question was worded, was that there was a base schedule, and then these are the additions or subtractions that could happen.
Right.
And, um, what I had proposed in the schedule was being open Saturday afternoon as the, we will absolutely do this. Um, so what the response of Saturday morning being the top choice tells me is people really want a full day on Saturday. That's fine, that's what we had before, no problem, so that one's easy to do. Sunday hours, of course, is the, the tricky one, I was hoping to see that people would be willing to trade off a full evening to be able to get to the point where we could offer Sunday hours, that's why the Thursday from five to nine was there. But you'll see that Thursday, five to nine, was the number four choice, um, which means that, you know, while people didn't necessarily, um, wanted as highly as other things, there also wasn't a great trade-off, because number three is nine to ten AM, which is new hours. So it's kind of like, there wasn't a compelling, yeah, we would be happy to trade off one evening a week in order to get Sunday hours. Um, and it's just hard with surveys, because I think when you're putting things in a survey, our minds all interpret the question differently in the responses, um, so whether or not that's completely accurate, people may be willing to trade off a Thursday night, I don't know. Um, but it does make things a little tricky for, for programming, um, especially in new services, um, and also somewhat for adult services. Having only three nights a week that we can do programming means there's only three nights a week that you can do programming. Um, and so those rooms are filled more of the week with programming, um, which leaves less meeting reviews. So it's always a, it's always a trade-off. Um, our schedule before the pandemic, if you can remember back that far, was Monday through Thursday, ten AM to nine PM. Friday, ten AM to six PM, and Saturday, ten AM to five PM, that's what we were doing prior to the pandemic. Um, we've talked about a number of things, I, I think new services was very hopeful that the eight, the nine to ten AM hour um, would be doable for us. Uh, the survey results certainly indicated that that was something that people were, um, interested in. It is the third choice of, uh, the ranking there, um, and if we could just add the nine AM hour on to the full schedule, that would be the easiest solution. Because what happens if we add the nine o'clock hour on is we have to take an hour off in the evening, and the survey did show that that was, that people said that was their lowest, um, ranking hours. However, we have adult programming to take into consideration, and, and talking with Marty, um, starting a program at seven o'clock and ending by eight is just really a tight schedule. So if you have an hour program, you start at seven, you end at eight, people aren't going to be out of here at eight o'clock, and an hour isn't really long enough for a lot of the programs that he wants to do, or, or does. So, uh, not sure that that's, that closing at eight is a great solution, um, for adult programming, and also meeting room use. And there's always, um, a lot of people who use the meeting rooms and they have their meetings, um, in the evenings. And again, starting a meeting after folks have a chance to get out of work and eat something and get to the library for the meeting, you just can't hardly start a meeting before six, six-thirty at the very earliest, so. Um, and I'm sure Brett could throw in her opinions on the meeting reviews part as well. So we've come up with a couple of different schedule options. Um, option one, of course, is keeping the old hours, is keeping the schedule as they were, as it was. Option two is shifting thing, everything up a half an hour. So we're giving a little bit more time in the morning, um, and shaving a little bit of time off the evening, but still trying to find a combination for both sides of the, the day. And then option three is shifting everything up, but on Friday, keeping that six o'clock close time, um, which would push Saturday to a slightly earlier close time, because that would add a half an hour on Friday. So we would reduce that on Saturday, so that's also an option. Um, and of course, staff have had all kinds of other options, a lot of which included, you know, closing that one day a week. I know reference, the reference department is really interested in closing one evening a week. Um, I just think it's, it's awful hard on, on folks doing programming to, to shove everything into three days a week. Um, it also makes it really difficult for people to remember what our schedule is, to be completely honest. Um, I think we struggle to remember what our schedule is, even when it's pretty consistent. So, um, adding a, adding something like that is totally not out of the question, there are libraries who do that. Um, but it does make for a pretty wonky schedule, so. That's some of the, um, discussion that we've had on staff, um, and certainly the schedule can be whatever we want it to be um, within the number of hours that we have, uh, for operation, because that's what our budget can reasonably sustain. So anyone have any thoughts on the schedule? Go for it, Carol. Oh, you're muted, hold on.
There we go. I'm going back and forth between my computer and my phone, and I could hear you guys earlier, but you weren't hurting, hearing me, and yes, I would have voted yes, but anyway. I have a question that I was thinking about, as I was in the library last Saturday and walked out at five or shortly before, and there was hardly anybody around, I began to wonder about seasons of the year, whether people are more likely to be in the library late on a Saturday, for example, in the winter than they are in the summer. And if it made any sense to have, uh, summer hours versus winter hours when we're looking at all of this, that's my question.
Yeah, we, we have talked about having a summer versus winter schedule, and a lot of libraries do that. Typically, your summer schedule is shorter. Um, typically, libraries who run a summer and a winter schedule, they do not open on Sundays during the summer, that's hours that they cut off right off the top. Um, but I think there are other libraries who also run, um, shorter, just shorter days on, on, um, summer months, just because everybody's out busy doing things. So that's certainly something that we could consider.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what the staff as a whole thought about that. Again, being the guy that for years it took me like at least a month to remember that you were closed on Sundays in the summer. You know, so I'm probably not an expert on this, but, um, consistency helps with me and busyness and whatever, but again, if there's nobody there at, you know, five o'clock on a Saturday in June. Maybe you don't need to, yeah. I'd be curious to see what what the thoughts are.
Yeah, I'm also, I think consistency is is a good idea. So I mean, I actually like option two because it feels like it is a perfect opportunity to try something different. Since the libraries, you know, since it's been such a transition time. And maybe, you know, try moving, move, shift everything up half an hour for the school year, you know, Labor Day to Memorial Day. And then see what the statistics show. And I know Bruce and is in the chat is saying the granular statistics are from Gimlet, but I don't know. I can't remember what Gimlet is because to me that's a gin drink, but.
Bruce has obviously got the the minibar open.
It's a log of the customer service interactions we have. We put things in there when we help people. Circulation statistic, it's like people being helped at the desk.
Okay, and it's not a door count.
It's not a door count.
Okay, but it would still be helpful. I mean, if we, you know, did, you know, do a shift and then, you know, did an analyzation, you know, analyze that data. You know, say, starting like even in March or April to see if it, you know, how it compared to pre pandemic, for example.
But that wouldn't capture programming and meeting rooms, which is what we're saying happens at night, right?
Okay.
Right.
Because reference is quiet.
Yeah, it is quiet upstairs in the evening. And to a pretty good part, it's really quiet in new services as well. We see people come in and they'll they'll do the the quick grab and go, um, at circulation, but the other floors are pretty quiet in the evenings.
We might be able to pull some circulation statistic data to by hour.
Amy, how hard would it be to do door counts on the hour? Would it just mean somebody would have to physically go out and count the and do the door count?
Well, I mean, it's it's on our computers. We just do it at the end of the night. I mean, someone would physically have to go into the gate count and take it every hour.
I wonder if we could, we could do that like on a monthly basis or something for a week, do it all week. And then, you know, just so we have a cross section of data because it does fluctuate over time, you know? And there are certain times of the year where it's busier than other times of the year. But we could get sort of a snapshot of it that way without having to do it all the time.
Okay, it'd be a little cumbersome, but I might have to do that myself.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, we can talk about how that can be done. I'm not sure.
Okay.
If we can automate that in some way, I don't know.
But I'm, this is Steve. I'm thinking if it's just door counts you're looking for, you should go get some pretty inexpensive gadget that, you know, you just break the beam and it's going to count. But you wouldn't know in out, but you could divide it by two and say everyone who came in had to go out and that kind of thing, you know? Bruce, you know, like door, like a driveway chime, driveway beam. Anyway, I I think that would be an easy thing to find a pretty inexpensive gadget that would count every time someone goes through.
We have on our gates that count. But it's just looking at the website to see where the gate count is.
At the data, yeah, like right now they dump it once a night, it sounds like, right? And then they would need to be mining it by hour to get the specific metrics, I think.
Even even if we just did it like twice a day, it seems like, because I feel like at least up in reference, everyone leaves to eat dinner and then they don't come back. And after working in youth services, youth services is really quiet after dinner because kids have to eat and then they go to bed.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
True.
That's the goal, right?
Yeah, every day.
Well, I I definitely deferred anything library staff thought best served, you know, public. But I if I if someone asked me, I think option two, I I'd concur with Ann. That seems like a pretty good compromise. As we're gathering data to refine it further.
Carol, of these three options, as I know you've brought up a seasonal calendar, but of the three options that are here, do you have a preference between them?
Well, I liked option two also. I I guess the Saturdays intrigue me because here people are out and about so much on weekends. I was concerned a little bit about Friday. One thought I had at one point was closing Friday at five. And then I thought, yeah, well, there are people that get off work at five and they want to stop by and do whatever. So I've been kind of all over the place on the whole thing. I guess option two would be my choice out of these. Part of me thinks we ought to do something unpopular to raise the issue with people again of we need more money and so on and so forth. But we don't have a bond or something on the table so that that doesn't get us anywhere except upsetting people. So option two would be my choice.
Okay. Patrick, do you have a preference?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that's probably the most agreeable. It's got the same start time. And, uh, yeah, it's just, I I think it's a a step going to probably back to where things were, if not being able to add some more hours sometimes.
Yeah.
Meaning Sundays ideally, right? I still want that. Yes, as does everyone, but we're not there yet. Obviously, we're just trying to figure out how to get back to where we were.
Right now, I just want to get to stage six of the reopening.
That's what we're, that's it.
I'm working on immediate goals at the moment.
But yeah, thanks to all the staff for, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of effort in in correlating this data and and just getting the survey out there and then the discussions amongst yourselves and having to kind of consolidate it all. So I know it.
I I think like Ann said, if we find that once we get back to full hours, you know, this is, we're coming back to a a new, a new normal of who knows. So maybe once we get back, if we pick a schedule that we want to start with and after Labor Day, then we we do figure out ways that we can more meticulously collect some data, especially on the ends of the day, even if we're not doing it every hour. If we're focusing on the times when we think we might want to make changes. If we're collecting data at that time, it'll help us be make informed decisions about any other changes we might want to make.
And it did just occur to me, it doesn't have to be as long as the school year, you know, it doesn't have to be Memorial or Labor Day to Memorial Day. It could be Labor Day to the Christmas break, you know, or sorry, the winter holiday break. You know, we could do, you know, analyze data for September or November and yeah, it feels like, yeah, it sounds like option two is where we're leaning. Unless anybody disagrees with me.
Well, just discussion. So, yeah, I'd like to hear maybe a staff's reaction of if they if they had a favorite horse in the race at all or not, so.
Does that give you the sort of the direction you need, Andrea?
I think so. Yep.
Okay, good. Other questions or comments about policy revision for operating hours? Hearing none, we will move on to public comment. Does anybody have a comment?
I don't know if everybody saw Lynette's comment in the chat, that longtime patrons are asking about opening at nine for computer usage. So she feels that nine thirty start timing, make them happy.
Yay.
Thanks, Lynette.
Yeah.
I think just as a patron, the times that I've been at the library, always in the morning, it seems that there are people waiting for the library to open up. So option two makes sense for me to move the time a little earlier. Again, late in the day, it may be quiet some of the times I've been in, but always in the morning, there are people waiting for those doors to open.
Sure.
Oh, option two, sounds good.
It's a good point. Thank you. Moving on, does anybody have any old business? Oh, wait, I do. Anybody else have old business? Uh, my old business is about meeting in person. And Steve, I don't think you were here when we just first discussed it, but the idea was once the library went to letting the public back into the meeting rooms that the board would start meeting in person again. We are under a local state of emergency in Marquette County, which means we are allowed to. My understanding is we are allowed to meet via Zoom through December thirty first of twenty twenty one. But my personal preference is to start meeting again in person at our August meeting. So I want to have a short discussion about that and see if everybody's okay with that. So I actually just go alphabetically, Carol.
My only concern with that is that I will be out of town on the August meeting date, I believe. Other than that, I'm fine meeting in person, but I I don't want to miss the meeting entirely. And there you.
Okay. Patrick, are you, uh, what are your feelings?
Yeah, no, I I I would welcome that. Yeah, I think it'd be nice to get back to to that kind of setting.
Okay, and Steve, I think at our last meeting, you had said you're comfortable meeting in person. Is that still true?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I I have no reservations at all, so.
Great. Okay.
I'm gonna have to put pants on, but other than that, I'll be fine.
Please. Yes, everyone.
I'll find them. I'll iron them or something. I'll make sure they're not wrinkled.
Okay. On to new business. We do have a board member vacancy. Lori Nelson has joined us tonight. She's interested in serving on the board. She's checking her schedule, um, to see if it's going to be for her, be able to work out for her. But it is time to advertise that we have a vacancy on the board as Andrea mentioned. So if anybody, I think it's going to go out in the next newsletter. Is that right, Andrea?
The next Insider.
Insider, yep. And we'll hopefully, I mean, I Lori would be a great asset to the library.
Totally.
I hope.
She's already sat through the meeting. She.
Now she knows what she would be getting into a little bit. Yeah.
Will survive.
It does, this feels like a pretty typical meeting to me. I don't know about the rest of you, but so. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments about the board member vacancy? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, board training. So we have the chapter five of the trustee manual. What is it? Oh, it's about funding. Yeah, I feel like we all have a very good, thanks to Rick, we all.
Yeah, no.
Of funding and our, you know, our financial footing and, you know, how things are. Although, I mean, Steve, I don't know if you have any questions about our funding, but I don't feel like this is something we need to elaborate on for a very long time. Do we lose Steve?
No, he's there.
Oh, okay. So. But I I mean, I'm not trying to discourage discussion by any means. I just, you know, we are, we have a one and a half mil through the city that's in perpetuity, which is fantastic. And then we have the, and then we have the half mil bond within the city. And then we have the one mil villages that are contracts with the five surrounding townships. And then we get some penal fines from a couple other of the smaller townships. We have a great working relationship with the city of Marquette. Yeah. We're very, we're on sound financial footing. So.
One thing that I would point out in this chapter is the the TIF financing. And that is something that, um, you know, Rick and and I have been keeping our eyes on. And whether or not we can opt out of, especially like the DDA district. And there is a provision that says as long as there's a bond, um, in the DDA area, we're not able to to opt out. So as soon as the Bluff Street parking garage is paid off, we will be, um, moving forward with the process of getting opted out. And, um, we had an email conversation with Mary Schlitt, um, at one point in time about that process. And now that she's the CFO at the city, she's that's she's perfectly placed for when that happens. That time comes up, we'll be able to, you know, reconnect with Mary and and say that we would like to opt out of the DDA district. So that should have a super great rate of our things that are clearly captured for DDA.
I I think that number is about forty thousand is what we give up to the DDA right now. So.
Yeah.
But it's a it's not a huge number, but it's, it would help.
Yeah, it's enough. Okay, any other questions or comments about the about chapter five of the trustee manual? Excuse me. I had a tickle in my throat.
And I believe Heather included some pretty good information in her this time about the development fund. So I encourage you all to to read through that information too. It's, it is a little confusing, but it's also, you know, we we do have several things going on between the the general trust and Carol Paul Trust that Rick managed and the development fund that Heather manages and how that all plays together. So.
Good. That'll, as always, beneficial. Thank you.
Okay, well, that does take us right up to standing reports. I didn't see any correspondence in the packet.
No.
Oh, okay. And oh, I have a question about Office three sixty five. So is everybody's domain name changed to PWPL.info?
Yeah, okay. Hooray, we're all in platform.
You're all, yes, in one tree.
That's crazy. Oh, it's fantastic. That's good. I'm very happy to know that that got done. And I was really happy with Heather's report. Yeah. And I'm totally in line with the fundraising goal for next year for, yeah.
That's actually the goal for this year.
This year, yeah.
I was gonna say, she's about to correct you. That's this year. No, we're not sitting back. No, this is, this is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for this year. It wasn't too long ago that we were excited to get to one hundred thousand. So, yeah, it's a big deal.
Yay, well done.
Yeah.
Well, and and the friends are really, I I can't believe how much that they're able to, you know, continue to give to the library. Heather figured that they're on track to to donate about twenty thousand dollars to the library this year. You know, continue to give to the library. Heather figured that they're on track to to donate about twenty thousand dollars to the library this year.
Wow. I would say at least that, and you know, that three hundred thousand does not include friends grants. The friends money is above and beyond that goal.
Wow.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Fantastic.
Mm hmm.
Because if I remember the number before the pandemic hit. We were, I was kind of thinking, yeah, they have a shot at getting in that twenty eight thousand type of. Fun funding, yeah, so.
Nice.
Yep.
So that's a a nice stabilizer for sure.
Yes, yes, it is.
For the programming and and. Material budgets.
Help fill in all the cracks.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And I'm very excited about the grant or the donation to digitize the mining journal. That's fantastic.
Yes, that that's very exciting. We're gonna actually like really go public with it. Probably early fall when the donors are really comfortable. Going public, actually having some stuff to talk about. The first batch of microphones have shipped from ProQuest, I believe. So, yeah, it's it's underway.
Well, that's something that Bruce was kicking around and involved in for years and it was like almost a go and then it wasn't and then it was and then it always came at a cost. So yeah, what a cool thing.
Yeah.
And then now we have people who can actually buy another copy of the microphone, which was always the.
Yep.
Right. Sure, no, no.
Did a lot of work with our donor.
Great, yeah. Well, good, because you you're well versed in it. And I know, I just know that's as long as I've been here and something you've been mentioning, like. Trying to do this, the need is there and the money is not, so.
Yeah, well, there's all, there was also a really big gap in hosting and so NMU's archive. Grant that was about a hundred thousand dollars to start uploading is really a huge part of this too, because, you know. The the donor had been talking with with us about this project for a while and Sam looked and looked and looked, trying to find hosting.
Right.
That was suitable for this large of a project and, you know, that would make a good platform. Because you can't just put up a bunch of PDF files. It just doesn't work that way. You know, you have to be able to search them and things have to be keyworded and to make it really a usable product, you can't just put a bunch of images out there or PDF files on the web. And she really looked for a long time to find hosting and then with NMU's grant, it really just kind of all came together at once where it was. Feasible and it would be local too, which is really pretty cool.
Yeah, that that, well, and I'm sure that's helpful too for any glitches that come up along the way, so.
Yeah, that's an extremely daunting and large and challenging project, but exciting too.
Yeah. Well, it'll take a while.
Yeah, it'll take five to ten years. So, yeah. Stay tuned.
But it's gonna be worth it. Are there other questions or comments about standing reports?
This is Steve. I have just a quick question for Bruce. Did I see there's another big chunk of FCC emergency broadband money coming out?
Yes. How that's going to be distributed, what projects, it's still kind of a little bit up in the air, how that's going to be.
But open the libraries, we get libraries are eligible or get some some of that money, you look like, right?
Right. One point seven billion or something like that.
It's a huge chunk. Okay.
There'll be more information on that coming soon.
Yes, thanks.
All right. Sounds like we've. Come almost to the end, but again, I just want to say thank you to Rick and. You will be missed, but we wish you all the best in your retirement. It's well earned and. I hope you enjoy it.
Oh, thank you.
May well. Got two good hips now, man. Nothing's stopping this guy.
I wouldn't go that far, Patrick.
It'll be in rolling in dance classes and all sorts of stuff, so. But yeah, I obviously we all hope we see you around, but you know, I hope you. Do way more fun stuff than hang out with me in your retirement, so please. Get after it.
Hopefully, we get meditation classes back on Thursday in the evenings here. That's still my intent to participate in that activity here.
Well, I know Jeremy would always appreciate that, so.
Good.
And if we get there early, we could ask you a couple of financial questions, Rick. Strictly off the record, but yeah. Yeah.
But I'm I'm confident that. Andrea will find a great replacement for me to. It's been uncanny. We've, you know, kind of faced this numerous times and it. It seems like every time the the person that comes on board. Is is an excellent candidate and it maybe doesn't match up with the skill set exactly, but has their own unique talents, so. So I'm I'm sure you're gonna, you're gonna find a great candidate here.
Good.
Congratulations.
Yeah. All right.
Well, I think, Rick, you could still apply for the job. Still, is it open? You could apply. I mean, it might be awkward, but.
No, it's.
Maybe some.
It's that time.
I'm sure.
Yeah, it's the the nature of life is. And as I say, there's never a perfect time to do it, but as I say, the the financial position of library and I'm real happy with that and. And this the staff that's here. Is is a great staff, so. So definitely, as I say, bittersweet, but looking forward to new chapter in my life and again, thank you for all the boards done to support me.
Yeah, 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 you're very welcome. Thank you, sir.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Too bad Andrew isn't here to comment on that, but we know what he's.
You know, he's out front. He's waiting. He must talk to him in person, I'm sure, so.
Yeah. All right, if there's no other, nothing else for the good and welfare of the organization, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. This is Carol.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Listen, Patrick.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote to approve adjournment. Carol, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steve, how do you vote? This is Anne. I also vote aye. We voted to adjourn at six twenty two PM. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
You know.
Brett, let's compare notes and we'll get these posted, all right?